I'd like to now call the April 7, 2020 Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. At this time, I do not have any announcements as the chairman, and I would like to move into the first item, which is the Host to Community Agreement request for Flying Goose. And I believe I have Rich, is it Renoni?
Yes.
And this is for adult-use marijuana retail cultivation and manufacturing and possible votes.
Correct. Correct. And I'm not sure how many of these you're going through. Are you looking at our presentation that we sent you? Do you want me to follow along with that? Or would you just kind of like me to give you the abbreviated version?
I do have the attachments of everything that you had sent over for a Host to Community Agreement. We have gone through a few of these here in town, so we're pretty well-versed in it. So if you wanted to just kind of give the Reader's Digest a bridge version of, you know, your business, the nature of it, and what you're looking to do, that'd be great.
Sure. Beside me is our Marketing Director, Chris Vianelli, with me here as well. Thank you for jumping on the call. I hope everybody's doing well and healthy. As you mentioned, we are Flying Goose. We are looking for a Host to Community Agreement for retail, manufacturing, as well as cultivation. Our location is at 116 Davis Street. We do have an LLI already with the landlord there. It's zoned industrial, about 12,600 feet of workspace. Our retail is going to be about 1,500. Manufacturing will be about 1,500, and cultivation will make up probably around 8,000 to 10,000, so we'll apply for a Tier 2. We have a community outreach meeting in the works. Obviously, with everything that's going on, it's going to be a little bit difficult to get that done, but we did reach out and send you guys a list of the butters, who we're going to reach out to. So we are getting close, but again, we're going to have to figure out when it's going to be safe to do that. A little bit about me. We've been in the cannabis space since the early month of 2018. We did reach out and obtain licenses in Oxbridge, as well as, we're on the agenda today, or going to be on the agenda for Thursday, for a retail space in Holyoke. So we do have some experience in the industry, and we keep, we hope to keep that momentum going in Douglas as well. Can we move on? Keep going on. Going through our business plan, you know, we do have a marketing plan in place already. We have been meeting with many cultivators, manufacturers, and retail dispensaries in the area. We formulated some relationships with the local cultivators, the manufacturers, and the retail shops as well. We hope to continue working and through letters of intent and agreements with different businesses to continue growing in the area. We put a pretty good team together. Peter Castabian is also on this call as our Development Manager. He's been in the space for quite a bit. We also hired the Legal Counsel of Dan Glistman through Prince LaBeltai. Well, if you want to back up a little bit and talk a little bit about the space. So if we're going to talk a little bit about the space and where the location is, it's 116 Davis Street, which we included the letter of intent for with Mr. Ferrani, who's the landlord. Basically, that shows that we have, we have control of the property in the form of a lease or a letter of intent, which will go to a lease if we're successful with a Host to Community Agreement, and then if we're able to do a successful community outreach from there, and then go to the state level and get a full provisional license, the lease will actually go hard. So that's something that shows that we have control of the property. The property is zoned industrial, which I believe, if we're not mistaken, if we're wrong, but that's the zone where this adult-use cannabis business is able to be started in the town of Douglas. Rich touched on the butters. There's not too too many. There are some, what it looks like is to be residences, not directly across the street, but pretty close to directly across the street, and we are going to focus on that. And, you know, even though we're on the zone, in the zone, I should say, make sure that they don't have any particular concerns because they do live there. It's not like they're a manufacturing or industrial business nearby. So they may have some, you know, they may have some unique requests for us or concerns that we definitely want to approach in the right way and make them aware of what we're doing. And if they're happy with it, then fine. If they're not, we are, before we move forward, we're going to make sure that they're happy with it in totality. I'm not sure what the town of Douglas has for the, for a impact fee that goes along with their Host to Community Agreements, but what we've been successful doing, I don't know if you mentioned it or not, not to speak for Rich, but he is a United States Marine Corps veteran, and, you know, going along with that theme, we've partnered with Project Hope locally. It's semi-closed, it's in Worcester, and some of the things that we've talked to them about were having some job fairs, and those, that was the group that we got together with when we were going to give our charitable donations, if that's acceptable to everybody at the town level as well. As far as what we're doing there, Level 2 cultivation, we're going to, excuse me, Tier 2 cultivation, which that means that that can be anywhere between 10, 5,000 and 10,000 square feet of canopy. That should satisfy our needs for what we have going on for the retail facility out front, sorry, I shouldn't mean in the front door, for part of the building there. And then the manufacturing is going to tie the two together, where the raw material that we actually grow, we manufacture the different products, whether it's whole flowers being sold, or pre-poll devices, or edible, things of that nature. And then if you, if you look forward into the business plan that we have, we've talked a lot of great deal about security, that's something that, you know, we want to focus on because we know that there is an extra level of scrutiny involved in the industry. So, I mean, we're going to, we're going to have top-notch equipment as far as cameras are concerned. We're going to have security, physical security staff on time at all points, and, you know, fences and lights and everything that's required by the state and the city. So we're going to try to meet the greater of the two, whichever that may be. And that's basically the majority of what we have. There's, I know there's a lot of information in there. We touched a little bit about the financial stability of Mr. Rynone and what he has available to with himself before he goes out to the market and raises some either debt or small equity for the project. That's basically, that's basically it that we have. Maybe it would be easier if you guys had questions, and we could go, go through questions versus us just kind of rambling.
No, that's okay. I, I know that we've been through quite a few of those, and moving into HCA's, we usually have a couple of members of the board that sit down. We have a pretty much, I would say it's a boilerplate form for a Host to Community Agreement that was written up by, was it Matt? The name of the attorney is escaping me.
Talaman and Mead.
Yeah, Talaman and Mead helped us do our Host to Community Agreement. So what I'd probably want to do is get a copy of that off to you guys for your review. And I think the last time, Dave, you're usually involved in the, in the negotiations on that.
The actual agreement. I missed the last one just through overwork.
Yeah.
But I'm happy to participate.
Okay. So what I would, you know, because I mean, your, your plan is very detailed. Do you have a, well, obviously, you can't really put a tentative date together for a community impact or meeting on that, considering you can't get more than 10 people near each other at the, at the current time. But I mean, in my mind, it would make sense to at least get you a copy of our Host to Community Agreement and go over it. And usually, it's usually my Vice Chairman, Mr. Cortez, and is Hal on as well?
He was Hal.
Yep.
And Hal are usually the two selectmen that sit down and just kind of work out the details off of the Host to Community Agreement. And then once we have that banged out, schedule a follow-up meeting with you guys for, you know, for an official vote and then granting that off. Does that make sense?
Okay. And so, Chairman, is that something that's done before the community outreach meeting? And like you said, I know it's a little different now because of the quarantine that everyone's under.
Not usually.
No, we haven't been requiring one order.
No.
Yeah. We haven't really put a requirement on the order of doing things. So I mean, if, like I said, I mean, trying to, I don't know how you guys would schedule an outreach agreement or outreach meeting at this time. But I'm sure you guys could hash something along those lines out. But no, there's not really an order that we do.
We haven't required it in the past, no.
No. We haven't required that in the past for, for an HCA with us.
Typically, the outreach meeting is required by the CCC during the application.
Yeah.
So we can get the Host to Community Agreement.
Yep.
Okay. So if I'm understanding correctly, you have a, like a board put together just to make sure that we have everything in correct order, and there's a form associated with that? Like a checklist type thing?
Yeah. Suzanne would make sure that all the paperwork is put together, and then we kind of built like a subcommittee off of the Board of Selectmen, which is our Vice Chairman and Selectman Davis as well. And they'll actually sit down and go line by line with you, and if there's modifications that you guys feel are unfair or need to be made, or vice versa, that's, that's the opportunity to work that out.
Yep.
And then we'd have a finalized document that would come back in front of my board for an official vote.
Okay. And Suzanne was the one who emailed us about this meeting. Is she going to send us the information?
Yep.
About the committee form?
Yeah. Suzanne will actually send you out the copy of our Host to Community Agreement and probably contact information for you and Hal.
Sure. Yep.
And we'll get a full package that goes out together via email, and then just Hal and Dave would schedule probably a conference call with you guys to work out the details.
Okay. Terrific. I appreciate it. You have any other questions? No, that's it. Thank you, Chairman. And our members, appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, hold on before they take off.
Oh, hold on one moment. Yeah.
Just to, and one issue to flag for everybody, as my son attempts to pan the camera over to his father. Keep going.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's me. Hey.
That's the Vice Chairman.
Told you I should have sat there.
You already have an HCA with another entity that would be less than half a mile away on Davis Street.
Yes.
So is, are you guys aware of that at Flying Goose?
We're not aware. What type of HCA is it?
So it's a retail, it's retail only.
Okay. One minute. Yeah. Yeah. We, we're familiar with, with the host agreement that, that is close by on that, on Davis Street, which turns to, and, and which goes into, obviously, you guys know as well as we do, goes, turns into Douglas where there's already an outstanding, an operational cannabis company called Carolyn's Cannabis, which is retail only as well. We are aware that there was, that, there was out of the facility on that road, and just because of the makeup of what's, frankly, what's available, what's in the zone, and what we were able to put together in a timely manner, we thought that this was still going to be a good opportunity, and we didn't feel as though it was going to be, we were going to detract too much for them, or vice versa, or even the other facility in Oxbridge. Our thought behind that was that if they were clustered a bit, it would, it would give us a situation where people who were choosing to come to the, to the area to shop for adult-use cannabis, whether it's in Oxbridge, close by, or the two facilities in, in close proximity that you mentioned, they could have more, more or less like a choice. And, and we didn't think that that was really going to detract from one another. We thought if anything, it could, it could come to a point where, you know, hey, if we're going to come to a specific area, if I'm going to get in the car and I'm going to drive 10 minutes, or 15 minutes, or even 20 minutes away, and I'm going to be shopping at some of these facilities, it may be beneficial for me to go to a place where I do have a variety of stores, you know, not that, not to the point where it's oversaturated, but to the point where, you know, we do have the freedom to choose a store that we like, or there may be a better diversity of products, in a manner where it's not going to, like I said, detract from one, one another. So we are.
Similar to a Diamond District or Auto Mile, where clustered similar businesses, but it sometimes helps them all.
Exactly. That's kind of the theory that we're going with. I mean, usually seeing McDonald's in close proximity to a, to a Burger King, you know, and, and to us, we didn't think that that was that bad. It is something that we saw, and we did take into consideration.
Okay.
I just want to be clear, because I couldn't follow your comments. You're aware of Carolyn's, then you're aware of the other HCA that Douglas has at the corner of Monroe and Davis, which, that would be through.
Yeah.
All right. As long as you're, you know the landscape.
Yes.
All right. Are you satisfied?
I'm very satisfied.
Are you good, Mr. Wojcik?
As long as everybody's aware of it.
Yeah. Tim, Hal, you guys have any questions, sir?
No. The only thought I would have is, do we have any responsibility or any sort of business relationship existing with the existing HCA in which we're not working in good faith? I mean, we, we had them come a couple times, and we told them we wanted to see them succeed, and, you know, this may be completely contrary to their business model. I don't know how the board feels about that, but I just throw it out there.
A lot of the regulation here, as we've discussed before, is taken over by the state and taken out of our hands. I don't, I mean, I don't want to be in the business of hindering any type of competition or competitive businesses, and I'm not sure that we can. If, you know, people want to come before the board, or any board in the town, and apply for a license, I think we ought to encourage that. Doesn't mean we want to approve every one, but I think we ought to at least encourage the application.
I appreciate that. If you could give us the opportunity. Yeah. And, and just to follow up on that, I mean, we don't, we don't have any, you know, it doesn't behoove us, and we don't have any intention of, you know, taking on any business practices that are going to, like we said before, detract from anybody else, or, you know, the idea is not to get them and get them a business. The idea is for everybody, again, to work together. You know, retail is going to be one of the three facets that we have at 116 Davis Street. So hopefully, you know, if we're, if we're manufacturing and cultivating product, there'll also be somebody that we'll be able to, you know, transfer a wholesale product to, and hopefully, we'll have a good working relationship and have some synergy like, like, you know, like you would suggest, like an auto mile or something like that, if that's possible. You know, that, that's our full intention, and, and, you know, we hope that they would and whoever else would come to the community outreach meeting and voice some of those concerns if they did have any, and we'd be, like, like I said, we would, we want to hear those concerns upfront and try to, try to mitigate those problems ahead of time, before we get, you know, too far down the road, because it's not a comfortable situation for anybody to be in if you're, you know, opening a brand-new business in a brand-new segment and, you know, people are already at each other. That doesn't help us, and it doesn't help them. So we're looking forward to having a positive, you know, relationship with everybody, and even Carolyn's further down the road. And even though it is a different municipality, it is very close by, and those lines get blurred, especially when people are just, you know, jumping off of Exit 3, and, you know, there's, there's a few different, a few different options for them. So yeah, so that's our intention as well, is to, you know, have a good working relationship. I would agree with that. And one, just want to add a note is that the application process is very lengthy. It can take nine months to a year to get a license, so there are a lot of people that do drop out in the process.
Right.
Although you have a Host to Community Agreement with, with anybody, it could be us, it could be them, or somebody else, it doesn't mean that they're actually going to move forward and, and complete that license and open up. So there is a, a lot of obstacles and barriers and roadblocks along the way.
I will tell you that in my head, I'm trying to work out something analogous to Auto Mile. Weed Way comes to mind, but we'll, we'll refine that and try to work on it.
Cannabis Way.
Cannabis Way. We'll come up with something everyone wants.
We'll get the signs.
Exactly.
Dave, Dave, you've come a long way on this issue.
Yeah. That, that is certainly true, and I think we'll leave it at that, Tim.
I was thinking the same thing.
All right. Is everybody good?
He's converted into a zealot.
He's even gone to wearing Hawaiian shirts. That's how far along it's come.
Those are American flags.
All right. Rich, thank you very much for, for your time, and, and we'll get information out to you as soon as we can.
Thank you very much, guys. Take care. Thank you, guys.
You too. Thank you, guys.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye. All right. Anything? No? We good?
On that issue, no. I think we'll handle it the way we've handled the others.
All right. So our second order on this is the ratification of recommendations in Civil Defense Director's Letter dated April 3, 2020, and possible votes. And I will read the letter in for the record and for those listening. This was, came to our attention, the Honorable Board of Selectmen, Town of Douglas, 29 Depot Street, came in via email. Starts, "Members of the Select Board, pursuant to your decision to appoint me to the role of Civil Defense Director for the Town of Douglas for the purposes of implementing Sections 13 and 16 of the Civil Defense Act of 1950, also known as Chapter 31 of Mass. General Laws, to address your declared state of emergency in the Town of Douglas. I write to seek your approval at the next meeting of the Board of Actions I intend to take. Specifically, I have worked with the Joint Command and the Town's response to the COVID-19 pandemic, which includes Chiefs Vincent, Migliannico, and Deputy Chief John Ferno, and Captain Adam Ferno, as well as department heads who have been assigned to support our emergency operations, including Patrice Rousseau and William Kundoff, to arrive at a plan to address emergency conditions and assess, assist the victims of the pandemic. Our findings and factors followed. The Board of Selectmen declared a state of emergency on March 17, 2020, to enable the Town's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The Town's Emergency Response Joint Command appointed Patrice Rousseau to Section Chief for Planning and William Kundoff as Deputy Section Chief for Planning on March 19, 2020, to formulate a plan of getting food to vulnerable Douglas residents who may not be able to leave their homes, or do not have means to obtain nourishment due to economic hardship made worse or created by the COVID-19 pandemic emergency. On March 23, 2020, Chief Vincent, in his capacity at the time as Civil Defense Director, ordered a written inventory of all critical supplies, including medical, food, and custodial supplies that may be needed to respond to the emergency or assist victims of the emergency. All Town Departments did respond with inventories of critical supplies. The Planning Section has coordinated with vendors, volunteers, and reassigned Town Staff to understand the size and population requiring help, as well as the supplies and logistical arrangements need, needed to sustain a program to address those needs. All experts and government officials alike have put the Commonwealth on notice that we can expect a surge of severe illness and strain upon the healthcare delivery system in approximately one week's time. Your Joint Command is unified in its consensus that the emotional and economic strain on the community resulting from the surge and ongoing shutdown of most economic activity will be significant and must be addressed proactively, especially for vulnerable children and elders. The Planning Section, along with Joint Command members, have attempted to coordinate with the administration of the Douglas Public Schools to utilize resources and personnel on hand to support the emergency response for two weeks. The universal consensus of the Joint Command staff is that we have no confidence in the School Department Administration as a partner in this effort for the following reasons. The school lunch program for free and reduced lunch has attempted to continue with a pickup service at the school buildings, which our judgment is misguided given the location of the schools and lack of reliable transportation that our neediest families are facing. We have offered the use of Code Red to get a tailored message regarding meals out to people via their phones. We have urged the School Department Administration to use one call specifically for needy students, but to date, there has been reliance on email and notices sent home instead, which we believe to be an incomplete effort. In fact, very few students and families are taking advantage of this program, being operated by the schools, therefore, no revenue is coming into the school lunch program, but wages and supplies continue to flow out of that revolving fund. There is nothing short of constant resistance and delay to expanding the program or thinking about use of the department's resources for a greater outreach and extension to the broader community, which we believe may start off as many as 150 households requiring assistance, including facilities that are in quarantine already. Town kitchen facilities, food service, staff, and food supplies are being underutilized at a great time of need. Therefore, Joint Command has agreed with the following recommendations for the use of my authority as the Civil Defense Director to take the following actions. The Town will avail itself of any school department, kitchen facility, food storage and preparation area, food packaging, food and food packaging supplies, and non-union staff necessary to deliver a program of delivering cost-effective, balanced, and nutritional food delivery program to the vulnerable Douglas residents. The school lunch program will be, shall be served under the Town's Program for Food Delivery. The Town will restore the School Department's resources and inventory to their status as of April 7, 2020, at the conclusion of the state of the emergency. The Town Administrator will enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Teamster and, Teamster local representing the food service workers at the Douglas School Department for a 90-day contract for temporary employment with the Town, with all of the same fringe benefits under the School Department contract, and wages to be decided, and the School Department contractual relationship with these employees will remain valid and in force through its terms and will be held in abeyance. The Town Administrator will conduct an emergency procurement in accordance with all applicable requirements of Chapter 30B of the Massachusetts General Laws to obtain delivery services for food supplies. The Finance Director shall track all expenses incurred by the terms above as emergency COVID-19 response costs, document them as such, and assign a funding source from the existing approved budget, and determine an approval path as required by law to fund the underlying program and ensure oversight and fiscal control of the, fiscal control over the operation. With your Emergency Management Joint Command, respectfully request your vote on the record in support of these orders and the associated spending. And it was signed Matt Wojcik, who is our Town Administrator and Civil Defense Director, Kent Vincent, our Fire Chief, as well as Emergency Management Director, Nick Migliannico, the Chief of Police for the, for Douglas, and Adam Ferno, who is Captain of the Douglas Police, of the Douglas Fire and Ambulance Service.
So, Mr. Chairman, the program has to be based upon needs, right? It has to be a documented need on the part of the community. We have thought since the beginning, roughly March 9, when we first stood up the EOC, that this crisis would get to the point where the combination of people's fear or concern about the spread of illness and severe illness, along with the impact of the economic shutdown, would put us, a substantial percentage of the population of the Town that was already feeling stress, under even greater stress, and that it would be appropriate for the Town if we could ascertain specific needs to act quickly to address them. Food is the most obvious thing, but there are other things that people need as well. It may include, you know, a pickup of a prescription or some other service. So we assigned a large number of Town employees, and the important theme for my comments is that these are people who are being paid. The taxpayers of the Town are paying these people's salary. Their job is different because their boards aren't meeting, there's not a lot of permit activity, the library is closed. So those staff were given a list of people to call by Patrice, who was the Section Chief for Planning. Let's document now how many people will need assistance from the Town. And as you can imagine, in a self-reliant and hardy community like Douglas, we have people who've said, yeah, you know what? I really don't want to go out and get my own food. I don't feel comfortable. I'm older. I'm a vulnerable population. I'm stuck at home. I live alone. Or there's somebody in my building that's tested positive, and I don't want to be out circulating with that. We have only called all those seniors in town who are over 80 years of age. That's still represented many days of work from five different staff people from dusk to dawn, pretty much of the workday, and the Library Director, Justin, formed a spreadsheet where he wrote- down all of different needs of different people and what their concerns were. We've launched this program already. So, on Monday, April 6, 140 meals were delivered to 70 different addresses in the Town of Douglas, from people who have self-identified as needing the assistance. Many of them were at Riddlebrook, where there's been a couple of positive case results, test results. We expect that number only to grow somewhat as we get into the deeper population cohorts, right around 70 years of age and higher. It's a much larger number of people. We still don't anticipate a program of much more than 250, 300 people maximum for a certain number of weeks. The important thing is, we do not have the capacity to service that need if we don't work in school buildings and use school resources. The thing that I want to emphasize is that so much of what we want to use are resources that the taxpayer has already paid for. So, if it's a school bus contract that Desi is saying they want us to fund, the rumor is 90%. They expect us to pay out 90% of the contract. But the buses aren't running because the schools aren't in session. If they can be our delivery service and we're paying them $84,000 a month, the taxpayer funds, we ought to get something for it. Fundamental principle of Massachusetts law is you don't pay for anything unless you have it, either a good or a service has been rendered. So, this idea, just throwing money at the bus contract, I'm very uncomfortable with that. I don't think it's lawful, and I don't think it's necessary. And our school bus vendor is driving buses around another town where they are active and where there are already up to 400 meals being delivered around. So, Telstone has been fantastic. They've been working with the Blackstone-Milville Regional School District that has taken the lead, but their sign-up sheet is anonymous. So, anybody who says, "Oh, it's for students only," baloney. It's anonymous. You don't know. What you do know is you have 400 meals being delivered. Cutting through all of that and every single contractual relationship, whether it's a vendor, whether it's a key employee of the school department, we need all those resources, and that's all we're trying to do. I don't take pleasure in writing letters like that. I wish the relationship were different. The relationship is much better on other topics. But right now, we are in emergency management operation. Our job is to identify needs and to address those needs if they are caused by the emergency that we are responding to, and we understand the common humanity that binds it all together. If we're more comfortable on the town side pushing forward with this, then we should just do that. And that's what the letter asks you to support, is the lawful authority that we have to do those things. On the board, I just tried to give you a sense of what we're talking about. If, not everybody can see it, but it's, I don't know that it's important to show it, because the math can be, I can describe the math. If you were at $4.50 per person a day, and that's $2,250 a week for an eight-week program with 250 people, it's $45,000 for supplies. And you may spend $900 a week, if you pay the workers $15 an hour, to get you there. So, 76, 80 plus, 45,000, whatever, 52, 680. But this is a qualified expense under FEMA reimbursement at 75%. So, the letter says, "We will give the school department all their resources back and make them whole for anything we take from them," frankly, because we will be able to. FEMA, as you know, when they reimburse us, it comes into the general fund. But what we do with it, once we have it, is send it to where it belongs. So, you're already paying these people, the food service workers, you're already paying the bus contract. There's an inventory of food that's already been bought, and then the vendor relationship meets to kick in to keep us going through an eight-week program. All said and done, it may only cost the town $11,000 to provide all of these meals for all of these people for eight weeks at a time when the country is going to be in extraordinary stress. A couple of things. One, despite the massive number associated with the federal program, $2 trillion, if you don't have an electronic conduit between the IRS and your accounts that you've set up in past tax years, and you need to get a paper check, they're not going to get those checks out for a good eight weeks. That's the prognosis as of today, is that it'll be May or June before the IRS can mail all of those checks to people who are going to get relief under the federal program. So, as emergency managers, we sat in this room and said, "What in the world are we going to do during this, we hope, brief period of a surge, where people are too scared to leave their homes, they have significant economic needs, they may have a child or an elder at home that needs nutritional support?" That's what we're trying to do here. We're not trying to pick a fight with anybody. We're not trying to put anybody in a bad spot. I would hope that we not get into a back and forth about how we got here and just move forward, because that's what we need to do as the EOC. We've identified a work plan that will keep us really busy for the next four or five days, heading into the so-called surge, and then we'll be really busy dealing with the actual surge itself. We don't have time for this, and we don't have time for back and forth. We'll sort it out when it's all over. Rich Bowen reviewed this letter. These are lawful orders. They're based on the existing authority provided by the Civil Defense Act, and I would ask for your support. The members of the team of the EOC are here, either physically President Chief Vincent is here. I think Chip Migliannico is on. If you have any questions about how we came to the conclusions, what we need to do.
Oh, good. Go ahead. Before we go anywhere, I mean, I agree with Matt's point. How we got here is slightly academic. I'll go on record saying, like, we're three weeks, four weeks into this?
Yeah, we have no time left. We've got to be up and running by Friday.
And I'm pretty disappointed that we are at the last minute. I certainly would hope that we, as a community in different departments, would find a better way to be able to work with one another with a back and forth. I find it discouraging on the school district part to see a town that's 15 minutes from here that actually has a successful meal program that's going through there. In a state of an emergency, in my personal opinion, the time for bureaucracy needs to get set off to the side. You either decide that you're a man of speech or a man of action. And most of the people that I've seen in interfacing in the EOC are people of action. I'm not one that wants to get into a big, long, drawn-out conversation about this as to your point, how we got there, why we got there. The point is, is that we got there. We need to get out of there. I recommend strongly that we support the letter that came from Matt as the Civil Defense Director. I just want whatever it is that's getting in the way to get out of the way, so we can just move forward and take care of our community, because I don't care what it costs the town. We have an obligation to our residents to take care of them in their time of need, and that's exactly what I intend to do.
Just a question on the numbers from your initial statement. You talked about, did I hear 52,000 or 56,000 total cost? You know, I'm looking for rough numbers. I'm not looking for exact numbers.
So, that's supplies plus labor.
Right.
Now, if you added delivery to that, if you were paying for that as a distinct service...
But you're not.
But we wouldn't be.
Because we're already paying for it, as we are paying for the labor of the people involved. Am I correct? But when I look at this, we get a 75% reimbursement from FEMA on this anyway. I mean, it screams the term "no-brainer" to me. We have people in this town, my understanding there always are in every town, that are on the reduced price and the no-cost lunch list. We have elderly people. We have people that are sick, people that are difficult, they can't get out, under normal circumstances, and this has limited their ability to get out, to shop, to acquire things that they need, most basically food. We're operating under that rumored specter that at any time, the quarantine or lockdown or whatever term you choose to use may get more difficult, or more stringent is probably a better term, making it even more difficult to obtain groceries, food enough to eat. To me, I echo what the chairman says. I'm certainly here to listen to what everybody has to say, but this is a no-brainer. The amount of money is relatively small, and we're eligible for reimbursement for a large part of that. We have people in contracts and services that are in place already. If we have resources in this town that are available and can be used to feed hungry people, there shouldn't be too much damn discussion about doing that.
Mike, Tim, Hal?
Yeah, I'll just weigh in very quickly and ask Dave a question. I think this is an opportunity to really let Douglas shine, right? In a time of crisis, this is an opportunity for this town, as great as we know it is, to really prove it. Question to you is, with the food bank in town, is there any opportunity in which we can pool our resources even further and strengthen the program by strengthening the two entities looking to meet a need here in town?
Is your question to Dave or to me?
Well, I know Dave's involved in the food bank, and just curious as to whether you see the good synergy between the efforts of the town and existing.
I don't know. Patrice, Patrice, are you on the line?
I am on the line.
I won't speak for you. Why don't you tell people what you've done with the food bank?
So, Father Juan and Nancy Norberg over at St. Dennis have been amazing. They allowed us to go through their inventory and make 140 meals that we sent out on Monday. We also made another 70 meals that are going to go out tomorrow. Monday's meal was for Monday and Tuesday, and then tomorrow is Wednesday, and then we're going to see what's going on moving forward. But they have been tremendous. They have a lot of people going to the food bank, so I think it's very nice that they shared their food with us, but I don't know if it's something that can sustain what we're trying to do moving forward. But if it's a collaborative effort, maybe?
That's really why I was driving. I just want to... No, I understand. I just want to make certain that we are, in fact, working collaboratively. We're asking all of departments to lend a hand, and I know we've got existing social service programs out there that, that service that, so, I don't know if we're working collaboratively, right? I hardly support it. I think it's an opportunity for the town to really come through for its citizens.
Mr. Morris?
Yeah, Brett.
Could I speak on this?
Absolutely.
I agree. I don't think it's worth getting into a back and forth on this at this point. I did send that letter to you, gentlemen, today. I'm not sure if anyone had time to read it, but I'd like to change the, read that letter now if I have that record?
Sure.
Okay. Stated April 7, 2020. It's from myself, Douglas Committee Chairman. It is my, my letter, and only my letter. It's not a statement from the school board as a whole. Members of the Select Board, I read to you today in response to the letter entitled "Food Plan Order Civil Defense, 0403, 2020, dated April 3, that was emailed to you by Mr. Wojcik, Town Administrator, on the same day, and signed by the former members of the town's Emergency Management Joint Command. First, I fully support the town's plans and efforts to be able to supply food to vulnerable Douglas residents during these trying times. This is a noble and worthy act by the town. I am not ready today to challenge the Emergency Management Joint Command's recommendations laid out in the last section of the letter. I believe these recommendations will put the town in position to best address the town's planned food delivery program. The main purpose of my letter today is to respond to what I see as a mischaracterization of the school department's efforts toward the Town of Douglas during the COVID-19 pandemic. Superintendent Mains has responded to this matter under separate cover via email on 4/5/2020, so I will not go through the specifics of the school's efforts over the last several weeks. But I will note that the school department's primary focus during this period has justifiably been on the business of developing, implementing, and executing a plan to provide improved education services to our 1,200-plus students, and to the best of their ability, provide breakfast and lunch to the students that had previously qualified for free and reduced school meals. This has been no small effort and has not been taken lightly by the school department. I believe that what, I believe that much of what the town administrator describes as "constant resistance and delay" in the aforementioned letter is the result of requests from the town to have the school department take certain actions, and the school department either looking to clarify what is being asked of them, or more so, noting the many restrictions that are placed on school districts when it comes to procurement, preparation, and distribution of food services. Stating federal regulations on this matter are fairly clear and indicate it difficult for the Douglas School Department to participate in certain elements of the town's food supply plan. I have read through the Civil Defense Act of 1950. To the best of my ability, I have not been able to find language that exempts our school department from adhering to and complying with the laws, regulations, and policies that govern our actions in this matter. For these reasons, I feel that the aforementioned letter both understates and mischaracterizes the Douglas School Department's efforts in support of the town. I will also state that I have full confidence in our school department to fulfill their primary mission of providing education services to their students, and commend them on the goddamn they have done with this for the last few weeks. I stated earlier, I'm not trying to block the Emergency Management Joint Command's recommendations, but what I do formally request is that this letter, that the letter emailed by Mr. Wojcik on April 3 is signed by the members of the Joint Command, is to be submitted into public record that Mr. Mains' email response dated 4/5/2020 and this letter be attached as rebuttal to the characterization of the school department's efforts in this matter. In closing, I want to note that I realize that during a state of emergency, the need to act quickly is paramount, and I believe that the Emergency Management Joint Command's recommendations put the town of Douglas in better position to respond to the needs of our citizens during this pandemic. I bear total respect for the members of the Emergency Management Joint Command and trust that they will do everything in their power to respond effectively to this crisis. While I do it in the characterization of the school department administration, I wish them all Godspeed in helping the town deal with what is to come. Sincerely, Brett Argyle, Douglas School Committee Chair. Thank you.
Brett, thank you very much. And I understand that there's been a Herculean effort on the school department's side to try and stand up, going from brick-and-mortar education over to e-learning. And I'm sure that that is potentially part of the reason as to, you know, why it's difficult to try and do, try and get something like that, try and get a food program going, and multiple things all at once. And again, I'm certainly not here to try and pick fault with anyone. I think the overall rebuttal in what led, and I'm certainly not going to speak for the people that sit out of the EOC or our Civil Defense Director, but if I was looking at it my way, as a veteran and has been in situations, not like a global pandemic, but where you have to make quick decisions, I would have to say that, looking around at some of the other districts that have successfully managed to implement these food programs on top of doing food program, doing an e-learning facility and a lot of the same similar tasks, and they seem to do it relatively quickly. I think when you're dealing with situations in an emergency, you figure out what the legalities are of it after. You have to do something, and actually, I'm going to quote our Fire Chief. It's like when you're sitting there fighting a fire, "What am I doing? Is it making it better, or is it making it worse? Okay, it's making it worse, so let's change and do something until the end result is making it better." And I think overall, the general consensus that came from the EOC is that the efforts, while understandable, trying to follow rules and regulations, in my mind, that should have been tossed to the side, and you should have just been doing whatever it could have been doing to make it better. And I think that moving forward with this particular act and approving this from my board is the first step in making a bad situation better and getting this community through this situation.
Question for Mr. Argyle?
Yeah.
What is, if you're speaking for yourself or the committee so-state, but what is, I guess, the committee's position on the plan as put forward by our town administrator? Are they in favor or are they opposed?
I cannot speak for the committee on that.
Okay, then your opinion, sir?
I'm in favor of it.
Okay. All I need to know, thank you.
I think my letter states that.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I think, I think the primary issue is, I think, the school department has felt that their hands are tied. Again, maybe, you know...
I'm sure, there were feelings all around here, and I understand that, but I think at the beginning, we all agreed that we didn't want a peeing contest, to be blunt. So, if you're in favor of it personally, I'm glad to hear that. I'm satisfied.
Yeah, I just, I do want to just note, though, in regards to the school districts, we would have contacted all the districts around us, and in our conversations with them, none of them have noted that there's far food outside of students. Those are direct conversations with the school districts that I think have been referenced.
This is me being polite.
Understood, but just, it was noted that the others who are doing this, and we don't believe that's the case, and at least from our conversations with them.
We have food, and we have hungry people. I'm really not concerned what other towns are doing.
My final note, because that didn't make into my letter, so.
So, I mean...
I agree.
Okay. I mean, to Hal's point, it's lead, follower, get the hell out of the way.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
This is Kevin Mains. Do I have a chance to speak?
Sure. Sure.
Thank you. So, a few things. First of all, I don't believe that the school department is trying to stand in the way we're seeking clarity right now. I have spoken with Lisa Leone, our food service director, on a number of occasions. At this moment, right now, I'm not sure what we're being asked to provide. We're providing breakfast and lunch, cold meals for our students. I have not been told, nor have we been given any definitive, please go out and get hot meals, cold meals, breakfast, lunch, dinner, Monday, Wednesday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. So, I was... There's been, this has been a process, and I don't want to go back and re-litigate the whole situation. All we're looking for is clarity. I honestly believe that the food service in the school department can play a major role in this. All we're looking for is clarity as to what is it that we're producing. It has been, it's gone back and forth from bags of non-perishables to cold meals, to hot meals, to, it started at about 2,000 people, it went down to 200, then it went down to 20, now it's 140. So all we're looking for is, I told Lisa Leone to be ready tomorrow to make 70 additional meals. If I hear Mr. Wojcik correctly, that's not even close to what you're looking for. You're looking for 140 meals, as I understand it. And so, if we could get some definitives, she's planning on making meals tomorrow because we thought that tomorrow was the launch date and having some meals ready in order to make that work. But again, and I don't know exactly what will, it would as well take, if anyone draws the name, Mr. Morris, is that, but there are things that are going to happen if we order food and an audit comes, the school department is going to have to respond to an audit. So my question would be, if we have to order food, are we doing two separate orders? One for the school and one for the town? Are we doing one order? We don't know how that's all going to be played out.
Kevin, can I quantify that quickly? I mean, in all honesty, and I'm certainly not trying to sound snarky, but we're in the middle of a pandemic. Do you really think you're going to get an audit after a global health crisis? I mean, that's just...
And do you really care? That should be so low at the bottom of everybody's priority list at this point with hungry people that it shouldn't even appear.
I'm suggesting that that's something that could happen down the road. I'm just throwing out what concerns...
Keep talking, Kevin.
I'm saying to you, if we can make meals, what is it that you want us to make?
Illustrating why we're so frustrated.
Yeah.
I think this is where this should end, Mr. Chairman, because we now have this live record of what we're dealing with. And if it doesn't feel like delay and resistance to you, just sitting here in the last 10 minutes, put yourselves in our shoes for the last three weeks. I've heard enough, Noah, I've asked for the orders to be given. We know clarity. We have clarity in jars. And Patrice Russo put together a program with clarity and precision with almost no time, but she had the cooperation of the people she was working with. We've asked you over and over and over, different questions, what's the lead time? We never got an answer to that. I just, this is what I didn't want to have happen, but I'm glad it did, because now people can fully understand. I'm going to get up and walk away from the microphone because I don't want this to be a low moment. I want this to be a high moment for the town of Douglas, closing ranks and dealing with a challenge, and not all of this nonsense about an audit. I mean, come on.
Matt, let me ask a question.
No, I'm done. I'm done.
But you asked it. Okay. Could someone please tell me, do you want breakfast and lunch, lunch and dinner? What do you want us to make? Make it what it is asked to make. Ready to order it, and we've got the people ready to make it, and I was planning on, they're planning on doing it tomorrow morning, but I don't know what...
You're doing it tomorrow, but you're out of it. You are no longer in charge of this.
Thank you.
The civil defense director and his staff are in charge of it. Thank you for your assistance. We will take your resources and your other supplies, and we will make the program happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Should we ask our other members of our board if they wish to weigh in? I don't think we got to everyone, Mr. Chairman.
At this point, I just want to do whatever it takes to get this moving.
Let them weigh in.
Yeah, please. Tim, Hal, Mike?
I have nothing to add, you know. I think we need to move forward. Time's running out, and we've got to do the right thing.
I assume we, this is Hal, I assume we do have a program exactly what we intend to do?
Yes, sir. So that was my prologue, was the effort starts with phone calls made by staff to identify needs, and then working with what we have by way of resources. Patrice designs, and we would like to do this with the help of the food service manager in the school department, designs a meal that is both fast-effective and nutritionally effective to implement, based on the number of people we have actually spoken to on the phone and recorded in a spreadsheet. We can't say how fast the program will grow. In Blackstone, I think they started off with a couple hundred people, they're over 400 now. Now, that's Blackstone, a needy community, much, I don't want to say much larger than Douglas, but larger than Douglas, and we can anticipate the growth in the need for the program as we get into a more stressful time.
What are you asking this board to approve, Mr. Town Administrator? Your letter or your plan?
So it's the orders included in the letter to follow through on those policies. I think that's what the Civil Defense Act contemplates, that the chief executive, which is the Board of Selectmen, would approve the actions taken by civil defense.
Understood. Tim?
Tim? Mr. Bonin, you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
I see this as an opportunity, okay. I see this as an opportunity to shine, protocol notwithstanding. I think we have a unique opportunity to really band together and do this. I would move forward.
I would entertain a motion to approve the letter as presented.
So moved. So moved. I beat you.
All right, looking for a second.
I thought I made the motion.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
All right, you made the motion, so who's going to second? I'll second it. How's that?
That works.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call vote?
Dave Cortez, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Thank you.
Hal, Dave, aye.
Okay. Motion's been made and approved. Moving on.
Thank you.
Review and approve public statement and possible vote? I don't have anything.
Not to belabor that, but I do think that we don't know what the next two, three, four weeks brings.
We definitely don't.
And this town needs the flexibility to carry out its vision, and I think it's the proper thing.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thanks, Tim.
I missed my binder.
Yeah.
So what exactly is the public statement? Because I don't have anything in mind either.
All right, so I did circulate this.
You did, I'm sorry.
I apologize, Matt. I'm a little flustered.
The notion here is that... Ah, shoot. I can't type and talk at the same time. It's one of the things I just can't do.
I'm listening, wait. Do you want us to move to another item?
No, I don't, because it, the notion is that we would like the Board of Selectmen to make a public statement at this time with respect to what we think is coming. Now, nobody can predict the future with certainty. Governor Baker, though, has really worked hard to educate the public on what is coming next, as has even the president and the leaders in other communities across America. We went through this period where the virus, thank you, where the virus spread amongst the population, and we didn't have a lot of testing resources in place to know how big it was getting. And it would appear now that we have decent hospital capacity to hold on to the quality and quantity of health care for those people who need hospitalization.
I have it.
But we're rapidly getting to the point now where the number of cases is going up rapidly, so the proportion of people who might need hospitalization is going up at the same time, and at this point, it's kind of like a storm surge for a hurricane. The seawall is built to hold the 20-foot surge, and you have 10 feet of the surge has already arrived, but you think another 12 or 14 feet of surge is behind it, and it's going to go over the top of the seawall. How much damage will that do? How many people will not be able to get into a hospital bed right away? Or how many people with the normal run of cardiac events or strokes or other needs for a hospital bed not be able to get one because it's already occupied by somebody dealing with the pandemic? That's the so-called surge, and people will not be used to this. It's totally unique around the world, except maybe for some of those places in Africa that have dealt with some terrible diseases, but we're just not used to this in our lifetime, seeing so many people pass away in such a short period of time. If you follow carefully the reportage coming out of New York City, there's this sort of grim march. I thought it would be appropriate for the board to make people aware of a number of things in a public notice that is the entire board speaking as the board and not just the emergency operations center putting thoughts out. What I did do, though, is I interviewed members of the emergency responders for what they think is coming around the corner and how it affects the way they interact with members of the public. So we don't want to put out national or international or even state news or considerations on the town's websites and communication. We want to talk about what will it be like to be a resident of Douglas as we go through this, and that's what the statement goes through. I don't want to steal my own thunder. This is only a draft, and it's kind of lengthy. Do you want me to read it, Chairman, or do you want to just put it out?
I'd be more than happy. If you'd like to read it, you can, or I can, or I, I mean, I have perused it. I've actually been going through it, as you were explaining, the back part of it.
I can read it. It's easier for me to read because I wrote it, and so I can see the words. "With the predicted surge in COVID-19 cases approaching at the end of this week, the selectmen have agreed to the following statement to town residents. Our country as a whole, and particularly our state, approaches an anticipated surge in COVID-19 cases, hospitalizations, and deaths over the next two weeks. We want you to be assured that your local government is actively partnered with the federal and state governments in addressing the public health crisis and the associated economic slowdown. These next two weeks could present an overwhelming experience for many people. Some will deal directly with the impact of coronavirus infection, either on the personal level or within a close set of family members or friends. For those who do not have a close encounter with the illness, there is the emotional drain of 24/7 news coverage of sickness and death, which is unusual for Americans. The uncertainty of the economy adds to the malaise and stress, especially as time marches on. The predicted surge of cases and resulting societal stress has driven federal and state planning. The federal government has put an economic relief package together for businesses and working families. The Commonwealth has put into place health and safety policies, such as social distancing and the shutdown of many public and private activities. Massachusetts has also been building healthcare capacity, opening temporary facilities, and gathering people and supplies. The town of Douglas has a local role to play in responding to the surge. First and foremost, the town continues to support actively the policy of social distancing. Town volunteers are working with congregate living facilities to educate residents on social distancing, honoring quarantine requirements, if there's a positive COVID test in the neighborhood, and the importance of aggressive hygiene management. Qualified town volunteers are working with the fire department and residential facilities to manage washing of clothing exposed to COVID-19 cases." I did correct the typo there. "In the event you generate a positive test result for the illness, the town nurse, Agnieszka Potstavka, receives notice from the State Department of Public Health. Her role is then to check in on your condition regularly and to learn from you the contact information for those you have been in contact with from 48 hours before you started with symptoms to the point where you quarantined. Cooperation with this outreach effort is vital to the effort to limit the spread of COVID-19 and, to date, has been excellent. If the caseload begins to grow beyond the town nurse's ability to handle on her own, she is authorized to delegate some outreach activities to other town employees who have been assigned to her. Town employees will identify themselves by name and are bound by rules of confidentiality. People who develop symptoms should interact with a medical professional. Many primary care physicians and other urgent care providers are using telemedicine via phone or video conference to provide people with guidance. It is not appropriate to call for an ambulance or to drive yourself to an emergency room. Being in a hospital setting is no guarantee that you will be tested and/or treated for COVID-19. In the event that you become ill and receive and believe that medical intervention is needed and you should follow your own symptoms, shortness of breath is the key symptom to watch for, then you should call 911. Dispatchers have a series of questions to ask callers, and every effort should be made to provide as much information about the person needing help so that first responders can protect themselves and you as they assess your condition. Douglas EMTs will interact with medical control to determine whether and where you should be transported. The Douglas Fire and Ambulance Department typically has one ambulance at the ready 24 hours a day, seven days a week. During this time, the department is doing its best to staff two ambulances around the clock, depending on the availability of call personnel. Now, today, we resolved that. We believe we've got the schedule full. If all of our ambulances are out on calls, mutual aid will provide assistance and response time will be longer. Residents should remember that all of the typical ambulance calls, such as cardiac arrests, broken bones, accidents, et cetera, are still occurring. Our resources can be supplemented, but at any given time, we hope residents will carefully determine whether an ambulance is needed so that those in the highest need can still get one quickly. Because of the current situation, you will not be able to ride in an ambulance with a loved one, and you will not be able to accompany your loved one into an emergency room. People should have a photo ID, insurance cards if they have them, contact information for their emergency contact person and their primary care physicians, as well as a list of medications they are using and a medical history at the ready. EMTs can gather this information for the proper person at a hospital to follow up on after a patient has been dealt with. Seniors who have the so-called file of life already have this information gathered, and EMTs are familiar with using that file for patients. With respect to emotional health, residents should be aware that there are numerous ways to protect themselves and get help if it is needed. Each individual knows how much information he or she can take in before it starts to become hard to manage. For its part, the town will provide, as it has for the last two weeks, an update each Monday morning on the number of cases and other Douglas-specific COVID-19-related news. During the week, the emergency operations center may put out a statement on specific incidents or concerns as the need arises. We have, at this point, put out 11 messages in about three and a half weeks. People who want to reach out and ask for help dealing with stress can call 211 and press the call-to-talk option. There is also a national helpline called the Disaster Distress Helpline at 1-800-985-5990 that is available 24/7 to provide immediate crisis counseling. Finally, we all know that in the background of the public health emergency, we have significant economic... economic disturbance that have led businesses to shut and people to lose their jobs. Fear of the pandemic may motivate people, especially our most vulnerable citizens, to avoid going out to get needed supplies. With schools out, kids who normally got a good meal at least once a day may not be getting that opportunity now. Regardless of the underlying cause of distress, the town is coordinating a response for those who have a need for stopgap food supplies and assistance with other important supplies. A combination of donations, volunteer efforts, and some emergency spending, the town can help the needy get basic food supplies. And we'll be entering, so what, the kind of has done is he's created a form that will be posted on the website that people can fill in with their name, their address, will reach out to them to confirm that they really did sign up. And that will be the process. And we'll also have the phone number published for the adult social center, which where people can drop a message. The current crisis will test the fabric of our community. We have worked with the town's day-to-day emergency managers and staff and many volunteers to make sure we close ranks around sound policies and pass the test. Douglas is a proud town of self-reliant, hardy people, but the current crisis is completely out of the normal pattern of snowstorms or economic cycles. Our extraordinary character will prove itself out by our ability to work together to come to extraordinary solutions. Be safe Douglas, ask for help if you need it, help each other if you can, we will get through this.
I like it.
I like it too.
I'd like to get that out as soon as we can, if we all agree on it.
Where will you post it Matt? Just a list of the places so that people, it was lengthy obviously, people know where to read it.
Right. So it goes to the very front page of the town website. It goes to the police department Facebook page, the fire department Facebook page, the Facebook page that we have set up for Douglas Emergency Management, and then Douglas Cable will scroll this message on a regular basis in between programs.
If they scroll it at the bottom of the screen, it might just go once a day.
It might be, it might be 2% font, 2-point font, but yeah, it'll go.
Are we looking for a motion?
Yeah.
I would make a motion to approve the statement as read into the record.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Dave Cortez, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Al Davis, aye.
Mike Uzdon.
Excellent.
We're posted.
Thank you. COVID-19 updates.
You actually can combine that with the administrator's report because I don't do much else. Numbers, I wanted to discuss numbers a little bit. So Monday we published that we have, we have had 16 confirmed cases in Douglas. As it turns out, about the only thing that we can truly document and prove is the number of confirmed cases we have. It's not the same thing to say that that's the number of people in town who've gotten sick with this virus, and it is not the same thing to say the number of people who are currently still sick from the virus. Those numbers are just about impossible to come by. For instance, today the town nurse informed me that when she works through the database, that she enters a lot of data into for Maven, it's called Maven, she can see the number of people in town who are quarantined by order of another community or state. And that number is somewhat higher than our confirmed cases. But what she doesn't know necessarily, because she's not given contact information, is where they are in their quarantine. So I cannot possibly report to the public in a credible and defensible way, the number of people who are still quarantined in Douglas for COVID-19 because frankly, nobody really knows the answer to that question.
And to expand upon that, our emergency people that respond to addresses may have somebody quarantined there from another community or another state, and we would have no knowledge nor would they when they walked up to the door.
We're going to try to get as much information out of that database and into the first responder's hands because we're allowed, there's been an order from the Department of Public Health to do that. But again, there's also this lag of when is the record going to come to us that somebody has been tested or that somebody has been quarantined by another community? And it may be days. So what, all I want people to understand is that of those 16 confirmed cases of Douglas residents, so that, that much we can always know, that if you're a Douglas resident and you get a test and you test positive, we will know that. Of those 16, many are no longer quarantined because they've already, this was some time ago and they've already come out of it and are done with it. So there's probably five or six of those 16 are still being quarantined, but the actual number of people in town who are either self-quarantined or ordered to be quarantined is, the total number that have done that is close to 80. The total number who are still in it, we don't know. So if it's anything like the proportion of the five out of our 16, it may not be a very large number at all. But that's why I'm reluctant to push those kinds of numbers out.
Right.
I do think it is a milestone to know how many positive test results you've had in town, that it gives you some sense of what's going on out in the world. We didn't have any today, so we're still at 16. And I think what-
How many people were hospitalized?
Well, we don't know, Selectman Davis. We know anecdotally, you know, I can confirm that two of the 16 that I know of have gone to the hospital and stayed there for a while.
Right.
But that's, you know, I don't like to put, really emphasize that in the public because it's not, it's not-
Positive, what's going on?
Yeah, exactly. So we just know that statewide, just a few days ago, we were under 10,000 and as of today, we're at 15,202. And there's a lot of things contributing to that. One is, this, this disease manifests itself across the population without respect to age, except for very young children don't seem to get sick. But it's pretty evenly dispersed amongst all the other age groups. Unfortunately, hospitalizations and those people who pass away are very disproportionately weighed towards people in their 70s, 80s, and 90s. So it gets into some of these elderly complexes, not really elderly complexes as much as nursing homes, it takes root and it really spreads rapidly because of the way nursing homes are set up. One staff person with a positive, with a, with a case, may work with 10 or 11 patients on a floor on a given night and infect a whole bunch of them. And so with the Soldiers' Home in Holyoke, you've seen that terrible result there and some other places, that's feeding the numbers. So we have a lot of facilities and you'll notice that the governor is dedicating more and more resources, they're sending the National Guard around to nursing homes to do tests on site and gather those swabs. The other thing that happens is it's a very contagious condition, so people who may have tested positive, who have a spouse or some other person living with them at home who's an adult, mostly the adults and people who are older, that's the logical next pace to look for the virus to go to.
Right.
And again, going back to the numbers, what doctors and hospitals are saying is you don't want to come to the hospital, so if you're not really all that sick and you have the symptoms of your spouse has a positive result, just assume you have it and stay home and quarantine, and it's not reported to anyone. It's known amongst that person's associates, but it's not an official record anywhere. So I don't think anybody should take it too lightly. 15,000 is not a big portion of the population of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but if you think about how widely things can spread quickly, that's why they're afraid of the surge. And that's pretty much what we have for, so much of what we talked about tonight is what the Emergency Operations Center has been dealing with. There are, there have been protocol changes to, for the EMTs. I will compliment both the residents of the town who've interacted with the town nurse and the town nurse herself, who has been fabulous. Her, the degree to which she has been on top of this and reaching out proactively to people, making multiple wellness checks as days go by, is not what other towns are experiencing. And I, I just feel so much more assured that we have the best information we can possibly get because someone who's trustworthy and diligent has been reaching out to people and asking the questions and, and gathering the information. So, so far, I mean, knock on wood, some of our worst fears haven't come true yet because I think the folks who are directly in the front lines, whether it's Agnieszka or Patrice and, and others, have really done a good job of educating people and people have been doing the best they can to comply. There'll always be those that don't, but we've got a lot of people who are respecting the quarantines and staying at home. That's all I have in terms of COVID-19 updates or reports from our side. Actually, I should say this, in terms of reports. We're still holding back on a recommendation for town meeting and for the budget because we'd like to see what happens with the surge. We would still have time to set a June town meeting if this does not materialize to be as bad as people say, or if it goes bias and we're able to relax. But town meeting is a public meeting, it's the most important meeting we have all year, so it has to be open to anyone who wants to attend. So we can't rush into it.
Right.
And we don't want to set a date if we're fearful that the virus might rebound and we go back into a shutdown again. So we're holding our powder dry on that. I will tell you though, that we've begun, and this chart here, when it comes to the food program, is also indicative of where we are with different expenditures. Our thought is, because there are a number of activities that have slowed or stopped and the money's not being spent, we might very well be able to live within the fiscal 20 budget within its parameters in terms of the total appropriation. The first step of doing, of meeting the needs of departments is obviously not the deficit spend. What they'll have to do is a two-step process. They would come to the Board of Selectmen for approval of an intra-budget, intra-fund transfer, and that would also have to be approved by the FinCom. If we run out of money and the only thing left is the reserve fund, then the FinCom alone can use the reserve fund to fund that activity. We started off the year with 50,000, you'll remember that we had 30,000 set aside for litigation, so, or settlement actually, so there's 20,000 left in the reserve fund. And then the Board of Selectmen, in your declaration of emergency, availed itself of 50,000 above and beyond what was raised and appropriated by town meeting. And that initial authorization has been approved by the Division of Local Service. So there's that reservoir. I'm much more optimistic that it's that first level of intra-budget financing that will get us through all of this, I'm hoping, because I just, I can see a number of major accounts we're not spending out. If we do get into a format where we have to do a month-to-month budget, I would just make people aware that month one is one of our biggest months of the year in terms of cash coming in and cash going out. Because we typically settle our Worcester County Retirement Fund obligation, we pay it in full within a few days of the assessment date and we get a discount for the tax bearers, I forget what it is, 2, 2.5% off the bill because we paid promptly. That's a big, that's a big part of our budget. So settling all those bills, we'd have a quarterly bill due for health insurance, self-insured fund, so that first month would be a big giddy-up and would be substantially more than 1/12 of a year's budget. We, we hope not to get there, we'd rather not see fiscal 21 be a bust, but the wild card for everybody to realize is, this economic shutdown will hurt the town budget and will give us pause when it comes to raising money locally, but for the state, with so much of what it does, being funded by excise taxes and other things that are tied to economic activity, this shutdown is really going to burst the bubble on revenues. And the question will be, how bad will that be? Can they cover it with their rainy day fund or what are they going to be able to do? We don't know the answer to that question. Our initial thought is, please hold us harmless. You gave us a preliminary cherry sheet. If you can honor that in any way, do that so that we can get through fiscal 21 and 22 might be the year of reckoning. So that's the financial forecast at this point. Gene and I have been working, when I've been able to pull myself away from these other things, I'm coming up with a plan for that, but I would expect that within two weeks, we would have some definitive recommendations for the board and for the FinCom. Now I'm done.
Are you sure?
I'm really sure.
Really, really?
Really, really sure.
All right.
Pretty sure.
Any thoughts on the town election, is it going to be moved?
I think without a doubt, Selectman Davis, it'll be moved. That is for the Board of Selectmen to determine. And with things clearing up for the town clerk, it might be best to ask her to come to your next meeting and have a conversation amongst you.
Yeah, I don't want to do anything without talking with Chris first.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Makes sense.
Anything else from anyone?
Oh.
So before I throw a, ask for a bone in motion, which he's made famous, and we move off to executive session, I want to first of all thank Matt for the work that you've been putting in through the EOC and, and keeping the, the Board well apprised of everything that's going on. The department heads, our fire chief, police chief, Gene for keeping us financially afloat, which I'm sure that she's got sleepless nights on that. And a big shout out to Patrice of just really stepping up and just getting it done and nailing it out of the park. On behalf of myself, and I, I would hope I speak for the rest of the Board, sincerely appreciate all the efforts and absolutely humbled by everything that you guys have been doing. And I'm just amazed, what a fantastic team we have.
Kevin, can I add to that? I just want to give a shout out to the school and the effort of maintaining some resemblance of peace. The remote learning piece, I can only speak as a father with two kids in the school system, but I can tell you they are being challenged and they're, they're making the best of it. And I just wanted to commend the school for, for making the remote learning process successful.
All right.
Glad to hear it.
So with all that, Mr. Bonin, could we get one of your famous motions?
You certainly can, I just took a bite of cookie, I must admit. I make a motion that we adjourn this, or excuse me, that we suspend this virtual meeting for the purposes of going into executive session to talk about contract negotiations and then to, we're going to leave that virtual executive session for the sole purposes of adjourning everything.
Wow. That was adapted, improvised, and updated for the new electronic era. I'm impressed. I'll second it. I'm, I'm that impressed that I'll second it.
All right, so the motion has been eloquently made and seconded. Could I get a roll call vote, please?
Dave Cortez, aye.
Kevin Morris, aye.
Al Davis, aye.
Mike Uzdon, I'm going to be recusing myself from the executive session.
Okay, fair enough, Mike. All right, with that being said, thank you everybody and have a good evening.